Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug. Mr. President.
Good afternoon, please be seated. Being on the council for years, you run into people that actually it's really encouraging that people pay attention to our meetings and I got a special friend that his grandson watches the meetings every week. His name is Andy Bulldog Otto and he's my good friend and he said would you give me a shout out for watching the meetings? So Bulldog, we got you. Go Notre Dame, go Creighton, go Huskers. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Adam Clark.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here this afternoon and hearing from you on our many items. If you have any difficulty hearing the proceedings today, you can consult our building commission representative here for a listening device or you may also access the meeting on the back screen there in closed captioning. If you have your cell phones with you today, I remind you to turn those off or at least to vibrate. We do have a presentation before we start our regular meeting today to be read by the Chair of our Public Works Committee, Danny Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Whereas in 1997, a group of Virginia Department of Transportation staff members wanted to dedicate a week to raise awareness about work zone safety amongst all district employees before construction projects picked up during the warmer months. And whereas in December 1999, the American Traffic Safety Services Association, in conjunction with the Federal Highway Administration and the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials, launched the first official National Work Zone Awareness Week. Whereas work zones play a key role in maintaining and upgrading our nation's roadways, but daily changes in traffic patterns, narrowed right of way and other construction activities often create a combination of factors resulting in crashes, injuries and fatalities. And whereas work zones present challenges for trucks and buses with sudden stops, traffic pattern shifts, narrow lanes and uneven road surfaces, requiring that drivers stay alert and pay close attention to road workers. And whereas individuals can practice safe driving habits, including slow approaches in construction zones, using alternate routes to avoid workload, being aware of commercial driving vehicle challenges such as stopping distances and blind spots, and moving into open lanes as soon as possible to safely pass workers. And whereas too many workers have been injured or tragically lost their lives while working to build and maintain our city's infrastructure, and as such, it is our responsibility to honor their memory, support those with lasting injuries and work collectively to promote safer road conditions for workers. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Omaha officially designates the week of April 21 through 25, 2025, as Work Zone Awareness Week in Omaha, Nebraska. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and cause the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on this 22nd day of April 2025. Mr. Rousher. And I'll let Austin make a couple remarks and I look in the audience, I see Mr. Patman Diddy here who has taught young drivers for decades at Cornhusker Driving School and I know Pat is listening to this and kind of nodding his head that that's what he teaches his students, so thank you for the safety you teach students, Pat. Mr. Rousher.
Thank you, Councilman Bagley and members of the city council for recognizing the importance of Work Zone Awareness Week and proclaiming it in Omaha. Work Zone Awareness is more vital than ever in Omaha. We have been blessed with improvements to our infrastructure throughout our great city in a monumental effort to move our infrastructure forward and provide the necessary services to serve the public for the quality of life for all. Recognition of work zones is vital for the safety of everyone within our transportation network. Workers inside of these zones are incredibly vulnerable to hazards that involve a great deal of kinetic energy that can affect the body, can potentially be fatal and cause very serious life altering injuries. We want all of these workers to go home safely to their family and friends. We've experienced great losses in fatal and serious injuries to these workers in recent years and as someone who's been on scene during one of these events, the feeling of loss after a tragic incident is something I never want to experience again and I never want anyone to feel the feeling of losing a colleague that will never return to their families. Let us not forget that work zone safety is also about drivers. We have recently experienced the unfortunate and tragic loss of those close to us driving in and around work zones in Omaha and again, something that's never, we never want to experience again. Work zones protect the safety of all. With your help, we can raise awareness to work zones, which is vital to enhancing their safety. In an era where we are faced with endless distractions, your proclamation of Work Zone Awareness Week highlights the importance of the issue and will help drivers and workers to recognize and navigate the dangers of work zones so all can return home safely to the ones they love and to those that love them. That's what it's all about in Public Works. We talk all the time about who loves you and who do you love and that's what's the most important to us is we try to stay safe in our work. Would like to mention a video that we had hoped to show today, but is available on the Public Works website. It's publicworks.cityofomaha.org. If you follow the traffic safety links, we lost a colleague several years ago on Salvatore Fedoni III and after that tragic incident, we produced a public service announcement that's available that we keep on our website as well, just to continue to remember him and to highlight that loss and to highlight safety within work zones. So thank you very much for recognizing Work Zone Awareness Week.
Thank you. Thanks for all your staff does and especially poignant with the start of construction season happening right now, so we urge the public to be aware in all their dealings. Thank you. Adam Clark.
Item six, to consider a Class C liquor license for Elian located at 4915 Underwood Avenue.
The public hearing and vote on number six is today. We have the applicant by Zoom. We'll get you off mute here in a second. Maybe just one more second here. Okay, try that. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm JT with Elian.
And your last name and address too, JT?
Last name Agenor, A-G-E-N-O-R. My home address or the business address?
Home address.
Home address, 5052 North 155th Ave, Omaha, Nebraska, 68116.
Great, thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today to number six? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. JT, I'll just ask you a couple of questions about the new business there. It's right in the heart of Dundee, just on the south side there. I think it's on the first level of one of the single family homes that has become a business there. You want us to talk about your plans for the wine bar and the European lounge there?
Yeah, so very excited to open up. So basically it's going to be a wine lounge, so lounge on the main floor, craft cocktails upstairs will be more of a wine room and our goal is to bring food trucks to park around the back so we can have light bites. Very excited to be a part of Dundee and bring Dundee to life again.
Great. I think they're excited to have you too. We look forward to seeing it. When do you hope to be open?
Fingers crossed, July, if all goes well.
All right. Great, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
First motion approved in a second. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item seven, to consider a Class I liquor license for Funny Bone Comedy Club located at 710 North 114th Street, Suite 210.
The public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is David Houghton here on behalf of the applicant, FBDC of Omaha LLC, doing business as the Funny Bone Comedy Club and Draftcade. The business will be located at 710 North 114th Street in Suite 210 and the hours of operation will be Tuesday through Sunday, I'm sorry, Sunday, excuse me, from 11 to midnight. I brought along with me today Colleen Quinn, who is one of the members and proprietors of the business and I'm sure many of you are familiar with the Funny Bone, that has been present in the community for a long time. This is going to be the identical concept, but it's going to also add an arcade with a bar adjacent to the arcade. If you have any questions about the business, either myself or Ms. Quinn would be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Glad to have you in the district, looking forward to coming to one of the shows. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items eight and nine can be considered together for Sanctuary Ridge replat one located north of West Center Road and Sanctuary Ridge Drive. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item eight, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item nine, a resolution to approve an amendment to the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items eight and nine are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion a second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 10, in ordinance to repeal the PUD overlay district for property located at 3819 X Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Peter Matthews. I'm the owner of 3819 X Street and what we're asking you for here today, this facility used to be owned by Corrigan Heights as part of a planned use from the 80s and recently they sold the building to my family. We're a family of seven and we've worked with the planning department to make it a residential home and so we're excited to be part of the South Omaha community. My current address is 2740 South 10th Street and I'll be available if you have any questions.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item 11, in ordinance to rescind the PK overlay district for property located at 3863 Mason Street and 3863 Marcy Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. Proponents?
I'm Kyle Hazy with the NA Consulting Group, 10909 Millville Road, representing the applicant. Along with myself, Charlie Sullivan is in the audience as part of the development team. There's about a two acre strip of property located about 38th Street between Pacific and Marcy. It currently is a strip of parking that provides some parking for UNMC. UNMC has decided that they no longer need that parking. Mr. Sullivan is working with UNMC to provide some additional housing that will benefit the area and the UNMC staff and students as well. It is currently a zone R5 with the PK overlay. We are just simply asking for the PK overlay to be removed from the zoning.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak?
Good afternoon, I'm Charlie Sullivan, the developer and I'm just here to ask her any questions.
Thanks.
Answer any questions.
And your address too?
11516 Rockahills Drive. Thanks, Frank.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Question for, I believe, Mr. Fansall, I'll direct this to you, Dave.
Dave Fansall, City Planning.
Dave, there was an opposition from a constituent of mine and we had discussed, she had a land survey done showing her property line to the west, that it extends several feet past a fence that she has in place and she's contending she didn't get permission to anyone to use her property or build, she's against the development, I get that, but specific to the fence, I know this is a PK parking overlay, can you just address that concern that my constituent brought in that opposition letter?
Sure, yeah. Again, Dave Fansall, City Planning. Yeah, I read the letter. To my knowledge, the developer and his representative are here today. It's not the intent of this development to use any other property, but what used to belong to UNMC, so art of the plans that were submitted as part of the repeal of this PK overlay showed no private property being used for the new townhomes.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Fansall. Charlie or Kyle, a question for either one of you. I know already on, we had all met and tell me about the outreach it did to the Field Club North or Morton Meadows or any of the neighbors in general being notified of this.
I reached out to the president of Field Club North and sent her information about the project. I offered to come speak in a meeting. She said that was not necessary and then she got, she sent out a mailer to her group, is my understanding. She got one comment back from someone who may have been, this person may not have been, just they were actually objecting, they were commenting on, we earlier had a waiver of a setback on the UNMC side from 10 feet to five feet, which was, has been approved and has caught on down the road, but the person's request was whatever number of trees we would have put in the 10 feet buffer, she wants to put in the five foot buffer, which we said yes to and we're glad to accept that as a condition, so we haven't, that was the end of that. And then I reached out to Morton Meadows. They invited me to attend a meeting, which is tonight, which I'm attending and she had no opposition to express when we chatted. And then, as you know, the city, we've also sent out a memo or a note to people within 300 feet, speaking of the rezoning and to my knowledge, the only letter you got was the one that you mentioned.
Okay, and I appreciated doing that because that was several months ago, weeks ago, I guess, early January is when we met and we did a Zoom call as well.
Correct.
And I live in Morton Meadows and when you and I talked, I said, make sure you include the west side of 42nd Street, which is Morton Meadows, even though this is 38th Ave in Pacific. I certainly understand my constituent, the opposition she has to this. I dealt with it in my neighborhood before I was on the city council with the boss apartments and I understand, you know, she's a longtime resident in Field Club North and having to construct new living quarters for people, that it's certainly the Med Center wants to be good partners with the neighborhood and I think that's the outreach you guys did. And the additional housing for staff and students, it's important for density in the urban core and certainly people that are going to be going to school or working or residing at the UNMC, so I appreciate the outreach it did and I just wanted to make sure on the fence and Mr. Fansall answered that for me. I don't have any other questions, Charlie.
If I could just add to Dave's comment, exactly right. I think sometimes people confuse their fence line and their property line, so clearly your fence, you know, we can't build anywhere, actually we're 10 feet away from her property line, which sounds like it's probably more than 10 feet to her fence line, but we would never build on her property, we'll be 10 feet away from it.
Okay, thanks, Charlie. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Just real quick, I think it was brought up, but I wanted to point out too, just to make sure that the setback or the request for the waiver on the setbacks was actually on the west side of your property, not the east side. So there was no request to lower or shorten the setbacks on the east side of the property, which would have been next to this neighbor.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. No further lights, is there a motion?
Second.
Motion a second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 12 and 13 can be considered together for property located northeast of 24th and Miami Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 12, in ordinance to mend the boundaries of the ACI overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item 13, in ordinance to rezone this property from GC District to MBD District.
The public hearing and votes on items 12 and 13 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Ben Swan, 3515 Hawthorne Avenue, 68131. With Swan Development, we are doing the redevelopment work for Carnation Place, which has been before the council many times. I did have a clarifying question about 12 and 13 and it basically says that it's referencing property located northeast of 24th and Miami for the ACI overlay and for the change in zoning and I would just like to clarify whether that is only for the Carnation Place lot that is in question or is that for additional area? What specifically, because this reads a little bit more vaguely than the application that I had submitted and I would just, I would ask for some clarification on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Here to answer any questions.
Thanks. We'll get that question answered here in a minute. Other proponents?
I'm not really an opponent. I'm the property owner of 2232 Miami. My name is Stanley Thomas and I just want to know, since I'm getting, that the area is being rezoned, how does that affect my property?
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Fansall, could you answer the two, oh, Director Fansall, could you please answer the questions by Mr. Swan and the other representative?
Sure, yeah. Dave Fansall, City Planning. The rezoning only involves property that is owned by Mr. Swan, so there's no other property being rezoned. The northeast corner of 24th and Miami is just a general location, but it clearly shows in the documentation that the only property that's being rezoned is a property owned by the applicant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve?
There's a motion to approve in a second. No further lights, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 14 through 22 were held on April 15th. I don't see any further lights, is there a motion?
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 23 through 31 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name and address and who you represent and if you are a proponent or an opponent, these are items 23 through 31 and I'll just note for council members, we have the applicants for number 23, 24 and 25 by Zoom if needed.
Good afternoon, Omaha City Council. Danny R. Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, 23, 24, 25. We have some information that might be helpful to the council to overturn some of the orders they have applied.
Danny, which item are you speaking to?
23, 24, 25.
Okay, gotcha.
I agree to a certain point, but at the same time, the technology for smokeless ashtrays has went away. So if we bring smokeless ashtrays to the bars, can we smoke our medical marijuana there?
Nope.
Okay.
Off topic. Any other testifiers on these items?
Good afternoon, my name is Crystal Rhodes. My address is 4565 Shirley Street and I'm here to testify in opposition to item 44. I have serious-
Crystal, these are items 23 through 31 so far.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Pete, thanks.
Okay, you bet. We'll call you up in a minute. Any testifiers on 23 through 31? All right, I don't see any, public hearings are closed. There's a motion to approve and a second, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 32, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment on certain lots in the city of Omaha. Litter Group number 2025-03 is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
The vote on number 32 is today, there is an amendment of the whole. Motion and a second, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 33, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment on certain lots in the city of Omaha. Weeds Group number 2025-04 is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department, B is communication.
The vote on number 33 is today, I don't see any further lights, is there a motion? Motion and a second, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 34, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to Sworco Reflex LLC for pavement marking beads to be utilized by the traffic division.
The public hearing on number 34 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 35, an ordinance to rescind ordinance number 41315 for the Hub Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
The public hearing on number 35 is today, proponents please.
Yeah, Don Seaton, City Planning, here for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 36, an ordinance to approve the Carnation Place Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 36 is today, proponents please.
Yeah, Don Seaton, City Planning, got him here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 37, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the African American Empowerment Network in the amount of $1,057,287 and to authorize funding for such agreement from the fiscal year 2024, Community-Based Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative Grant.
Public hearing on number 37 is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, council. Willie Barney, CEO, founder of the Empowerment Network 2401 Lake Street. Here in support of the ordinance and available for any questions. One of our key partners that has helped to make this application and complete the grant application is Nadia Spurlock on our team. So I'll give her an opportunity to share with you what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Nadia Spurlock, and I serve as the, sorry, I'll go back. I work for the African American Empowerment Network 2401 Lake Street. I serve as a community engagement policy and fund development specialist at the Empowerment Network. Since stepping into this role of, in June of 2023, I've had the privilege of providing technical assistance for the Omaha 360 Violence and Intervention, Violence Intervention and Prevention Collaborative. Over the past two years, I witnessed firsthand the level of strategic and professional collaboration within this group, and have had the opportunity to co-organize numerous prevention and intervention efforts, ranging from Omaha Public Schools' community safety interventions and emergency crisis assistance for victims of gun violence in collaboration with our partners. This unique data-informed collaboration has been credited by Omaha Police Chief Todd Schmodder and others as a major factor in the city's recent milestones, including a 100% homicide clearance rate for two consecutive years, 30-year lows in homicides, and 40-year lows in non-fatal shootings. However, I noticed that as we celebrate these measurable outcomes, the question then became, how do we keep the momentum going? The answer, we realized, lies in an even more focused, individualized support and deeper collaboration with our grassroots leaders who have been doing this work for years with limited to no compensation but undeniable success. I watched as these partners came together to analyze the data, identify youth in need, share organizational focus areas, and name the areas in which they want to grow, all in the spirit of building a informed, coordinated ecosystem of services. So, when the Community Violence Intervention and Prevention Grant application opened, and we saw it as a way to finally provide resources to the organizations on the front lines, I was ecstatic to lead the application process. Some of you may recall that this same funding opportunity was awarded during the last grant cycle where the same $2 million was split only between UNMC, UNO, OPD, and the city. It felt incredible this time to advocate for these dollars to be directed directly to the community, especially to leaders who have been planning, preparing, and doing the work ready for this opportunity. Now, here we are, able to say that these organizations, many of whom have worked for years with limited resources but deep community trust, are finally receiving support at a meaningful level. This moment should be a point of celebration. It is years in the making and long overdue. Through this process, we are not just funding programs, but we are building capacity. Over 85% of the Empowerment Network's budget is being directly allocated to grassroots and partner organizations. This is by design. One of our core priorities has always been to uplift, equip, and expand the reach of trusted leaders who are already doing the work and continue to provide them with additional tools to continue to build. We see this as a launching pad, not just for this cycle, but for sustainable, long-term change. With shared metrics, collaborative planning, and a steadfast commitment to positive outcomes, we will continue to deliver targeted, data-informed support for our most vulnerable populations. I respectfully urge the council to continue moving this funding forward. We are showing what's possible when community collaboration is fully executed, and when those closest to the challenges are also those closest to the solutions and finally resourced to lead. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for that summary. Are there any other proponents that want to speak on number 37?
Good afternoon. My name is Roscoe Wallace. Address 2403 Decatur Street. That's the address of my company, Viable Healing. Excuse me. I'm proud to stand here today and tell you guys that I'm, I'm one of those partners that Nadia talked about. And that partnership with Empowerment Network, Law Enforcement, OPS, has bared a lot of fruit. And some of you guys, I'm sure, know that. What we're trying to do now is really get deep within those partnerships and, and recognize them on those grassroots levels. And I'm sure we'll see a lot of success as we have thus far. But it's basically, basically getting the support from the community in those grassroots levels. And I think that is attributed to those clearance rates, a lot of the violence, and we got a lot of work to do this summer and, and moving forward. But this will be the support coming from you guys, if possible, thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Yep, go ahead.
Trying to strangle somebody's foot back here.
You're for our yes, partner?
Pardon me?
Donnie, what's your turn, please?
Oh, I didn't know he was coming up.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
I'll go first, because mine's gonna be real fast.
You're a fast speaker.
And are you a?
Donnie Asa Johnson, Johnson and Question Foundation.
Are you an opponent, Donnie?
No, I'm, I'm for both programs, to tell you the truth, but.
We're not opponents, but if you want to clarify your position, are you a proponent?
Well, I come up to the opposing side.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, because that's what you're at right now, right?
That's right.
Okay, so, I think what Mr. Barney here is doing in his wonderful speech the young lady did is a wonderful thing. I think what they was working on. But what, the problem we're having with this is what Mr. Barney, his program is basically centered around high school, and which is a good program for the high school kids. When we, Senator Dave Kern and Senator Chuck Hagel, and I agreed when I went into study with Bostonians at the United Nations to bring the African Americans into the global economy. So if they're gonna put the Peace Corps a part of this, that's what they are sending me to do is, and study with the folks who's gonna send some products to South Africa, and I advocated no. We're gonna go there and see for ourselves what needs to be done. So I would say continue with this program, but let's put the Peace Corps for the older adults, because the young people will take over later. Thank you.
Other opponents?
Now I'm confused as to why I was here. Proponent or opponent, actually, I'm, I'm here for both. My name is Ben Salazar, 1703 Ontario Street, South Omaha. The, the question that I want to raise here, first of all, Mr. Barney, congratulations. And to the young lady who just spoke. I like their thesis, I like their, their, their project, their program. I like the fact that they're getting funded for it. And I like the fact that they're aiming their efforts primarily in the African American community. Now, if you didn't know any better, looking around at the folks in this, in this room, you might think, well, there are no Latinos living in Omaha. Or in fact, there's a whole lot of Latinos living in Omaha. Almost 50% of the kids in grade school and junior high are Latino kids in the city of Omaha. But you would never know that, looking at this room and the folks that are in this room now. And I have to come here because I'm an old civil rights activist. So questions of civil rights and equity and equality are the things that have driven me for more than half a century. That's at the top of my list of a priority as to what I do. I don't get paid for it. I've been paid by being blessed with the opportunity to do what I do, which is advocate for Latinos. I'm a Vietnam veteran. I grew up in Jim Crow country. So I'm very aware of how some, some groups are subjugated, made to feel like second-class citizens in our own country. And that has always galled me, angered me, motivated me. But I'm here to, for two reasons. Number one, to say congratulations, because the Empowerment Network has proven to be a great success. But I've been here before, some years ago, when federal money especially was being spent for communities of color, for children and families of color. And one of the things that I'm really bothered by, and I'm directing this at my own community, is that we fail to elect people from my community who sound off on these issues of equity and equality. And you can see here, I'm the only one here from South Omaha who's speaking on what I think is the inequality in this federal money. I know the, the, the efforts of the Empowerment Network are dedicated to the African American community, first and foremost. Great, I applaud that, I support their efforts. But when we're talking about federal money, it's incumbent upon the city, city council, the legal eagles, the mayor, to be aware that we have two large communities of color in Omaha. So it's not up to us to drive down here, like I did today, and speak out on this issue. It should be the responsibility of city leaders in a large metropolitan and what should be a sophisticated city on the issues of race and ethnicity. Especially when we're talking about public services, public dollars. These are public dollars. In looking through the partners that have been described in this proposal, there are two major partners. Encompass, which is a department at UNMC, I looked at the composition of the folks that run that program. I do not see one Latino among those folks that run that program. At UNO, Criminal Justice, another partner, there's two individuals that will be apparently contracted with, or services from UNO. Maybe some forensic services. One's an African American, one's an Asian American. No Latinos. I am compelled, not sure exactly how I'm gonna do this, but I am compelled, just like I was years ago on the original Step Up program, to say, wait a minute, if we're talking federal dollars, then we have to consider equity. Then we have to target not just the African American community, but where's them folks from the South Side? Where's them Latino people? Where's their leadership? Well, they're not here today, but I'm here today. And I was educated and brought up to advocate for that community, whether I'm elected or not. Education is a powerful tool. And I'm here to tell you that, looking through the proposal, and it's only a quick read, because it's a lengthy proposal. And I do have other things to do with my time. But it's important for the community at large and the community leaders, elected officials. All of you went to college, all of you have a fine education. Where were you when we were talking about civil rights? Did you go to those classes or did you not? Equity, equality, are those just fanciful notions that we just toss out and say, hey, let's just throw that in there for the hell of it? No, this is serious business. Folks in my community deserve better. It's not our responsibility to go knocking on doors and say, hey, look at us, look at us, and just invite you to come down and have a Corona and a Cinco de Mayo taco. That's not enough. These are real people. These are real forceful, intelligent people, and that's really what bothers me. The intelligence in our community is par excellence. We have great people in our community, we just don't have the voices. We just don't have, as we say it in the, in the body, we don't have people with the whistles to come up and say, hey, wait a minute, stop the record, we want to dance too. Now, unless there's some equity and equality in this proposal, in the way this money is being handed out for the community, for the workers on the ground floor, because that's where the money should be, on the ground floor. That's where real change happens. Not in some classroom, not in some offices, on the ground floor. That's where change happens. And it still has to happen, especially in South Omaha. All we can do is look out the window and say, wow, they're doing great things in North Omaha. Where's our people? This is why it was so important when city council picked our next councilperson for South Omaha.
Ben, I'm gonna have you stick to the proposal here on, before us, right? The grant to the Empowerment Network?
Correct.
Yep.
While I'm here for, for them, I support their efforts. I've told Mr. Barney this many, many times before, I support what they're doing, they're doing great things. It's the fact that we're talking about money from the federal government, and they have all kinds of parameters and restrictions on equality and fairness and, and non-discriminatory factors that ought to be involved in the allocation of those monies. That has to be a prime consideration. But not only that, on the ground floor, the, the Latino community should have been notified, should have been invited to participate with the mayor's office, to say, okay, what do we need, what can we do for you? That maybe not be the equal, but at least let's do something down there that's positive. So I support their efforts, but I'm very concerned that the city didn't do its job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents to number 37? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Barney, I have a few questions, if you wouldn't mind answering them.
Yes, Willie Barney, Empowerment Network, 2401, yes.
Thank you, it's no doubt that your program that you and your workers provide in the community is very important and impactful to the community. However, this contract that we're going over today as it relates to what's before us, I'd like to break it down a little bit further so that the greater community can understand it.
Sure.
When we look at the attachment, it talks a little bit about it, but it doesn't really flesh it out to a point where the average individual can conceive it or understand the value of it. So I'd like to talk about that. Mr. Salazar mentioned concerns about the Latino community as it relates to your program. So if you could articulate the boundaries in which your services will be providing in the Omaha community, that would be helpful.
Okay. So first of all, thank you, councilwoman, I appreciate the opportunity to share more. And as Nadia has spoke about this opportunity, this is really, I won't say celebratory, but it's a significant moment. For the last 18 years, the Empowerment Network and hundreds of organizations, from neighborhoods to churches and others, have been working alongside the city, alongside the police department. And to Nadia's point, last year, we saw a 34-year low in homicides and non-fatal shootings. I don't think that's by accident or coincidence. That's community, grassroots-level folks doing the work. And for the last three, four years, we've been really intentional. How do we get resources to those agencies or organizations, some of them single person, some of them two or three people, and they're at the hospitals, they're on the street, they're called on by the Empowerment Network, they're called on by the city to intervene, to work with our young people, and they're the best at it in the city. So over the last three years, we have worked with them intentionally to develop strategies on, how do we get resources to them to support them in building capacity to continue to do the great work? Most of them have been doing it with limited resources, if any resources. So this is the first time. These, this original application that was created through the Biden administration was specifically to get dollars to community-based violence intervention organizations. So when Nadia looked at it, we looked at it as an organization. We said, this is a significant opportunity, because this is exactly what this is designed for. So we made the applica, we were beginning to make the application, and we wanted to honor the partnership we've had with the city. So rather than us applying directly, that we could have, it's a benefit in working with the city, because the city has been able to manage large-scale federal grants and work with the federal government on a large scale. So why not partner with the city and make that application? So that was a year ago. So the core elements of it is building on the successes that we've had with these grassroots organizations, being able to build capacity, hopefully maybe hire someone, a part-time person, whatever it is that they can do to build so we can serve more youth in the community. I think if you look at the demographics and the trend lines, we've made significant progress in North Omaha, a 70% reduction over the years that we've been doing this partnership. However, we see this year right now, and what we're talking about right now, as a breakthrough moment. The goal that the community has set in North Omaha is reduce gun violence by another 50 to 70%. This type of initiative with the community grassroots organizations participating is exactly what's needed to make, take it to that next level. So hopefully, I'm answering your question, councilwoman, but that's the genesis of it. These organizations have been doing work for as much as 18 years on the ground, maybe more. This is the first time that the city, through the partnership with the Empowerment Network, is actually investing to help these grassroots organizations. When, as to Nadia's point as well, we're looking at this as a beginning of, how do we now invest more in prevention and intervention? And to honor what Mr. Salazar said, I believe, once we get this started, the goal is, yes, as we did with Step Up, expand. How do we work now with South Omaha, West Omaha? But these partners work citywide already. They, they go and to work on events and activities around the city. So there's more to be said, but I'll hopefully just answer questions that you have around, or anyone else's questions.
Well, one question that I asked was, is, are there boundaries? Because Mr. Salazar is under the impression that the services that you have been provided, as you mentioned, for 18 years, grassroots, et cetera, will these services include not just only North Omaha, but the Latino community oftentimes identified with South Omaha?
Yeah, the two, two responses. One is, I think there's a misperception, as you know better than I do, North One is, I think there's a misperception, as you know better than I do, North Omaha is probably the most diverse area of the city. If you look at the demographics, it's about 40% white, 40% black, 10% Asian, 10% Latino. So even as we're focusing primarily on North Omaha, all of these groups have worked citywide from downtown to whether it's Jean Lahey, to partnering on parades in South Omaha. So all of these groups have experience and are called on across the city. So one, North Omaha is incredibly diverse in and of itself, but this group absolutely, it does work across the city.
So it will work across the city, so it will address Mr. Salazar's questions or concerns about the Latino community?
Yeah, and I think the biggest piece is that this is the first, I won't say first step, but it's another step, but it's a step in getting resources to the smaller grassroots organizations to begin with. And then I think preferably, we'll see opportunities to expand and grow that, but we have to start in a focused area to begin with. But again, these groups work across the city, but this specific grant is that we have to identify youth and young adults. We haven't set a specific age yet. So it's more geared towards those that are either actively involved, have been involved, or that we need to get their attention right away to get them into something positive. So as we develop the audience, that is yet to come. We have not determined exactly who will participate. That will come from the partners because it's a grassroots-driven initiative.
So have you identified the focus area then?
It's not specifically geographic-driven at this point. It is driven by reaching out to specific individuals that will then be a part of the initiative moving forward.
Okay. So in the attachment, the agenda, it breaks out basically the narrative as it relates to your dollar amount. Your admin coordinator, it's been allocated a cost of $50,000.
Yes.
Do you have that person identified already?
No, we have, really in some cases, Nadia has played that role up to now, in addition to her other work. And the Empowerment Network has, by request of the partners, played that role of administration, coordinating, bringing the people together, capturing the data, polling the community, understanding what the needs are. So as we go forward with the council's approval, we will begin that process and we'll do a hiring process, an open hiring process like we do for all of our positions. So that's one small piece. As Nadia said, if you look at the rest of the document, 85% of the funding will go to those small grassroots organizations to help them build capacity. But yes, we did decide, many times, the Empowerment Network just does it, and we just do the work, and we just add more to the existing team. In this particular case, because we believe it is the platform for additional work, we want to make sure that we have someone that is actively waking up every single day, looking at how these initiatives are coordinated, who are the people that are in part of the program, what support do these partners need, what administration do they need. Many times, they are doing the work, they're doing the work 24/7 in some cases. But that administrative end of things that we can help them with, with the grants management, reporting, some of that coordination work is exactly what we're built to do.
So will this position be advertised in the Omaha Star? Where might someone and how soon do you anticipate, should this be approved?
Yeah.
A notification to the public? And back to Mr. Salazar's point, then I would think that it would be open to anyone, regardless of color, would be able to apply for this position. Is that correct?
Yes. We typically post and get it out through what's Indeed and other ways. It goes throughout emails, through all types of channels. So it's advertised everywhere and announced at public meetings. So yes, it will be an open application, just like all of our positions.
When, do you anticipate a date in which you would notify the public of this open position?
Yeah, the first phase is to go through, get the formal approval from city council. And this is a three-year grant. The part of the Empowerment Network is in year two and three. So we'll have, once agreed and supported by the city council, we'll have the next couple of months to walk through that process, as well as the planning, finalize the planning with the partners. So I would say with the next two to three months, there should be a position posted.
And then also, there is a conversation about data management evaluation.
Yes.
That data management, will that be coordinated with other agencies such as the Health Department, perhaps mental facilities and things of that nature? I mean, can you elaborate on where you're heading there with the allocation of $65,000?
Yes, thank you so much for the question. As Nadia mentioned, we're really making this data intensive. One of the things and the strengths of Empowerment Network over the years, with the city, with the police department, with the school district, we have always concentrated on, how do we track this over time? How do we trend it? So it's not just a snapshot, but it's a comprehensive longitudinal picture of exactly what's happening. So we wanted to be intentional with this, not only to track the partnerships that we have with these grassroots organizations, but to also help them build capacity on how they're tracking the data. So that they have the capacity built up, they can apply for future grants utilizing the data that they've been able to capture. The only way to do that is to have a strong vendor who knows this work, does evaluation, and can report back to us, report back to the city, report back to the federal government. So we take the tracking of data incredibly serious, and that's why we put that position, contract position, in to be able to find and work with someone that can do that type of work. So absolutely, the data component is critical to this work.
So this data component, as you mentioned, is going to be critical as you continue to ramp up and do other things. How will you share that information with partners? You've mentioned neighborhood association. As you know, in East Omaha, most of the communication is dealt with with neighborhood association. Oftentimes, not able to attend meetings on Saturday morning that the Empowerment Network provides. Oftentimes, not able to go to the 360 meetings, which is at 2:00 in the afternoon. So again, where would the point of entry be in terms of sharing that information across all vehicles so that it has the intent and the potential to provide the services needed?
So one, to your point, so yes, there's a 360 meeting, there's a Saturday morning meeting. Periodically, we'll have evening meetings to share information. We make sure that we can get information to the neighborhood alliances when they meet. There's some other partnerships that can be developed around that. But social media, email, there's consistently information that's going out, the state of North Omaha, other events where we're sharing information and providing that, as well as the partners themselves. The partners attend their own meetings, they host their own meetings, but they definitely go into neighborhoods as well and share that information. So I think we can even develop a more robust strategy and plan for that because one of the goals, Councilwoman, is that we want to make sure that the city knows, the federal government knows, and just as important or more important, the community knows, that this investment into prevention and intervention going further upstream is exactly what we need to do right now. So we will do everything we need to and want to, to share that information, to show the successes that's already happened, but definitely what comes out of this.
So I think it's important to identify or to distinguish the difference between an alliance and a neighborhood association.
Sure.
Because certainly there is. So would you be willing to spread yourself to provide that information or be willing to share that information on the individual basis to that neighborhood? Because again, they are the front runners, they are the individuals that will be directly having a relationship with the police department in terms of their first point of contact. And so, I mean, that's going to be critical, that that information sharing is available. So am I able to notify neighborhood associations that they can anticipate coming to you and you providing that sharing of information that you gather on this journey?
Absolutely, absolutely. And if, Councilwoman, if, we reach out to the neighborhoods all the time, work with a lot of the neighborhoods, but if there's some that reach out to you and would like to know more information, we'd more than gladly send someone there as well. So if they don't have to come to us all the time, we'll certainly go to them.
Okay, and then there is the direct intervention case management. Can you expand upon that?
Yes. So I mentioned a number of times, and Nadia as well, that we're working with grassroots organizations. So we wanted to make sure before we start to speak about it, and again, this is a significant moment for the city. We're talking about investing now in grassroots organizations that are doing work. And so some of those partners, you've heard from one with Viable Healing, with Roscoe. We have the North Omaha Community Partnership. We have Viable Healing, you talked about, Code Z, Visionary Lion, Youth 360, and Riley Protection Group. So those are organizations on the ground that we'll be doing, specifically working with 100 of our individuals in the community over this next couple of years. So there's case management that's a part of that, that's working with the families, and it's the entire family, the support that's needed, the wraparound services that are needed. So that's what we planned as a part of the grant.
So would you be willing to provide a list of those partners that you are including in that to?
Absolutely.
To the general public with a brief description of what and how they will be contributing to these efforts?
Yes, with their permission, absolutely. You know, we talked, and they are totally open to sharing how they will be working with this grant and how they support the partnership, absolutely.
Then there's a line item of $65,000 as it relates to event planning, strategy, outreach, referrals, meditation.
Yes.
Can you expand on that? How will you do outreach? How will you communicate those efforts? Because we all know that in certain areas, communication serves as a barrier to communities.
Yes.
And so the typical way of communicating that one might have, such as Facebook, maybe the Omaha Star, et cetera, may not necessarily get down to grassroots. So how will you handle those challenges so that we make sure that everyone has a opportunity to leverage these events and these outreach and thrive with this? Because after all, that would be the intention of this.
Yeah, and I think that's another great example. I appreciate the question. It's another great example of, as Nadia mentioned again, those that are on the street doing the work, that they are part of the solution. So these strategies have been developed by those on the street. For example, Leo Lewis with Visionary Lion. He has helped the last number of years with Juneteenth, Native Omaha Days, on the ground recruiting dozens and dozens of volunteers. It's from that strategy then that this has been incorporated into the work that we're doing here. So when we're talking about strategy, whether it's event coverage, whether it's special opportunities that are going on, it's people like Leo, Latron Lewis, Roscoe, Tamika, and others that are on the ground that are actually developing that strategy. And that communication is frontline. You know them. You know that they're frontline. They're communicating all the time in the neighborhoods and with the community, and they have proven with their work in the past how effective they are at doing it. So not only doing the work, but sharing with the community what it is that they're doing.
So that would also extend to the Cinco de Mayo event? So they, obviously, in South Omaha, they have individuals not like Leo Lewis, but someone that has that type of admiration, if you will, in that community, that has the same value, the same opportunities to collaborate with that community, to make things happen. I mean, do you have boots on the ground in South Omaha to kind of lift that up?
Yeah, that's starting to go outside of the specific, what this particular application is about. However, that work is ongoing and that all of these groups have supported, whether it's Jean Lahey or other parades. They have not been contracted per se to do that work specifically. Maybe one of them has. But the first thing we would do is honor the people that host the event, the organizer. And we wouldn't, we would definitely knock on the door, but they would have to make then the invitation and then to develop what that relationship looks like. So we always honor whoever's hosting the event, organizing the event. So that would really have to come from the Cinco de Mayo parade organizers. But these groups, I can tell you, all of them over the years informally have supported events across the city, and especially whether it's Jean Lahey, Cinco de Mayo, Juneteenth, Native Omaha Days, yes.
There is the cognitive behavioral therapy. There's 49,500 that's been dedicated to that. Can you expand on that?
Yes, yeah, another great question. Thank you for the question. So CBT, cognitive behavioral therapy, when you look at national best practices around reducing gun violence and preventing violence, CBT has been identified as one of the top 10 best practices around that. So we've had guest speakers come to 360 and share their knowledge around that. And I really appreciate Nadia being very intentional about making sure that that is available. So working with our young men and young women and others of different ages, it's been proven that when they go through that type of training and intervention, their decision-making is improved. And again, best practices, national best practices shows that CBT works extremely effectively.
So how we do a good job at the teenagers and young adults, but overall, when we're talking about parents 30, 40, 50 years old that also exist in the community?
Yes.
Is there a plan? Is there a strategy to somehow get them to buy into this notion, this notion to change into a positive approach in our communities?
Yeah, and I know, I believe I have one of our core partners here with us, Tamika as well. One of the things that the group, because they do this work every day, they have really emphasized, this is not just young people, this is the entire family. So for the last three years, as we polled our community and com polled within 360 and specifically heard from these partners, they want to make sure as much as possible that the entire family is a part of this solution. So much so that they've recommended that maybe we reduce the number and focus on a smaller group, but we want to stay with that 100 that we're going to work with. But the goal is always intentionally making sure as much of the family as possible participates in the process.
Okay, so last but not least, we do get to vote on this next week. So that would give you an opportunity to provide that list along with the brief scenario or summary of what those organizations or partners would provide as it relates to what's being presented here today.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks for the questions.
Thank you. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson, for asking all the questions I was going to ask. I say that jokingly, but I do mean it. But I read through the documents provided to us, and just to reiterate, I see no reference to boundaries in the document. And so just to reiterate what's already been said, the intent of this grant is to service all the community, the community of Omaha.
And it's specifically, as I mentioned, it's not geographic-bound, it's really individual-bound and family-bound. So that's intentional, so that we've made substantial progress, but now we know we need to go directly to individuals that we can work and wrap around and support them into making positive lifestyle changes, employment, what is it that they need, and then answering and really working with them. So yes, it's not geographically bound, it's more specifically on, where do we need to go to continue to prevent and reduce gun violence in the city?
Okay, so I'm not going to put you on the spot this week. I will next week. But I would like to see something from you next week that's going to convince me that some of this money will be spent in South Omaha, specifically my district.
And, well, I don't know if I can ask you a question, but I'd love to hear more, and if we need to talk outside to hear more about what it is that you're thinking of.
Well, you know what? That's a great idea, and I'm really glad you suggested that. Let's facilitate a meeting between me, you, and Mr. Salazar.
Great.
Could we do that?
Absolutely.
Okay, Ben, I'm sorry, Ben, would you come up to the mic, please?
I'm Ben Salazar, 1703 Ontario. Yes, sir.
Mr. Salazar, you're amicable with sitting down with Mr. Barney and talking about exactly seeing what their plans are for outreach to my district, your community, my community?
I have a good relationship with Willie. So we've talked many times.
I don't want to assume anything.
No, no, listen, here's what I don't want to happen, because I see what's happening, and Willie is rightfully defending the proposition that's been put forth, and he's done a great job. Like I said, I support what they do. They do it for their community. But I don't want to play games with reality here. But I don't want to play games with reality here. They do it primarily for the African-American community. That's what the African-American Empowerment Network is. That's how they were founded. That's their aims.
Ben, I understand that.
So, but, so, well, this is the point. The point is, he shouldn't have to defend everything they do there because they've done a great job. It is incumbent upon the city, the mayor's office, Planning Department, the city council, to be aware, cognizant of these disparities so that when these grants are being funded and issued through the city or in partnership with the city and the county, there's too many people walking around with blinders on in the city, in the administrative offices, like these folks don't exist.
Okay, Ben, I'm going to have to cut you off. I just want to know.
Yeah, I'm good.
You're willing to sit down with us?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
You pay, you pay for the coffee.
Thank you. All right, thank you. I'm sorry, I have to defer that to the president of the council.
There are no further lights, only if a council member wishes to call additional testifiers?
Larry, come on up. I'm going to give you one minute, just because I don't want your barber complaining to me.
One minute is just a little short. Everybody else gets whatever time they want.
Thank you, goodbye. The Equality Clause of the Constitution is what we ought to be talking about here. We don't need Mr. Salazar, we don't need this gentleman to argue with each other about equality. Pete Festerson, I got a minute. Will you shut up?
Larry, your name and address for the record, please. That's all I'm asking.
Mr. Barney, thank you.
You wasted your time there, but you had the opportunity. There are no further lights there. Next item, please. Thank you.
Item 38, an ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code to add the employment classification for City Prosecutor Personnel Board recommends approval.
The public hearing on number 28, or, I'm sorry, 38 is today. Proponents, please.
Good morning, good afternoon. Claire Anderson Hubbard, City Human Resources.
Chelsea Ship, City of Omaha, Human Resources.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Deb Sander, City Human Resources. We're here to support 38 through 42, here to answer any questions. They're all related to classifications.
Great, thank you. We won't make you get up for everyone. Any other proponents on number 38? Seeing none, any opponents? Donnie, this has to be to the classification, personnel classification on number 38, right?
I was going to share some stories about free lunch. It's over.
Nope, personal classification, number 38.
Number 38.
Go ahead.
And that's this young man here, that's his salary, right? That's who we're speaking, huh? The city prosecutor, right? Number 38?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I agree with this young man here. I think he's just needs some more education in far as what we're doing on my programs. And this free lunch stuff is basically over. So if he's going to get a raise, I would like him to be more involved with allowing those who have felonies to get into the Peace Corps, and that would pay the extra money he's going to be getting.
You're off topic, Larry.
What's that, what is this, $151,000?
Donnie, Donnie, this is not having anything to do with the Peace Corps. It's a personnel classification. I would ask you to stand down, please.
Okay.
Any other opponents to number 38? Seeing none, next item.
Item 39, an ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code to add the employment classification entitled Claims Adjuster Personnel Board recommends approval.
The public hearing on number 39 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 40, an ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code to change the salary for the Assistant Library Director Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number 40 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Next item.
Item 41, an ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code to change the title of the Class specification of Threat Assessment and Crisis Intervention Team Project Coordinator to Threat Assessment Coordinator Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number 41 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 42, an ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code to change the title of Registered Land Surveyor to Professional Land Surveyor Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number 42 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 43, an ordinance to approve the amendment to the Omaha Police Officers Association Collective Bargaining Agreement to adopt a new pay plan. Personnel Board recommends approval. Bees communication in opposition.
The public hearing on number 43 is today. We'll start with a presentation, I believe, by the administration.
Bernard Indembosh, Deputy City Attorney, present members of the city council. You'll recall about 18 months ago, we were before you with a pay raise that was negotiated with the Omaha Police Officers Association that had the dual goal of increasing retention and recruitment. Unfortunately, the result of that particular action, I don't say unfortunately, as other Nebraska agencies that we compete with for our hires have increased their pay. So we've seen an escalation of pay as other agencies raise kind of a tit for tat so that they can recruit those people who are interested in being police officers. Currently, the city of Omaha is the highest paid law enforcement agency in the state of Nebraska, but that will likely change this summer, and we know it will change in the fall. So the mayor and the police chief began talking late last year, beginning this year, about what we could do to address that particular situation. The goals were kind of twofold. One, for the recognizing that the law, the Nebraska, the city of Omaha Police Department is the peer law enforcement agency in the state of Nebraska, and consequently should be the highest paid, with two, an ability to afford it, which obviously is the second part. So the mayor put together a plan, and that is what you have before you. Part of that particular plan, however, includes amendment is at agreement with the Omaha Police Officers Association, and the mayor took her plan and proposed it to the Omaha Police Officers Association in early March. And I'll talk about the first three things, which are part of the collective bargain agreement, then the other steps that are a part of accomplishing that goal. The first thing was looking at the top officer pay for the remainder of 2025. And the goal was to make the city of Omaha 5% higher than anybody else. Currently, we're 2.3% higher than Nebraska State Patrol as of the beginning of 2025. So this particular amendment raises the pay for top officer of 2.7% to make it a 5% raise, and then raises, applies that 2.7% to each officer at each rank and all steps for the remainder of 2025, once it's implemented by the council. The second step, and this is this attempt to address this escalation that we were seeing between the law enforcement agencies, was to come up with a process where Omaha would remain higher than the other law enforcement agencies and maybe take away the incentive for other agencies to escalate their pay. So the proposal and what you see is, we take a snapshot on May 31st of any given year, this year, obviously 2025, look at any pay plans that are in place for the 20, that will be in place at the beginning of our 2026 payroll year, and to make sure that we're 5% higher than that, than those agencies. And as of March 31st of 2025, La Vista would, has a pay raise going into effect on October 1st. And in order to ensure that we remain 5% higher than that, we will need an increase of 5.58% at the beginning of the 2026 payroll year, and that's what would occur automatically as a result of this particular amendment. And that would continue in years moving forward unless the parties negotiated something differently. The other thing that we wanted to address was to enhance our ability to recruit lateral officers who are experienced. And we, we have done that in the past by increasing where the lateral officers are not necessarily placed at the initial step, but they don't necessarily get credit for all the years that they've served in their law enforcement agency. In this particular case, for law enforcement agencies with eight years' experience in the Omaha Police, Omaha metropolitan area or an equivalent metropolitan area, the Nebraska State Patrol or the Lincoln Police Department, if they moved to our agency laterally and had eight years of experience, they would move to the top step as opposed to currently, it's approximately the fifth step. So those are the three things that were part of the negotiated agreement with the OPOA that's before you. The other parts of the mayor's plan included taking applications continuously, testing for police officers instead of one or two times a year, which we had been doing three to four times a year, and making sure that we could test, test numerous times. Part of that is also going to be a code amendment that will probably come before you in the next month or so that will allow us to have multiple eligibility lists, which would allow us to have the testing process occurring continuously. We also are going to establish two police academy start dates each year. Those will be posted in the postings for the position. The thought process there is then people understand when their potential start is if they apply and make it through the process. And the last part is a commitment that if we have people who've designed, who have other jobs that have ended or we've committed to having given them conditional job offers to be in our police training academy, that we would provide them an opportunity to work as a seasonal employee in the telephone response unit if there was a gap from the time that their last job ended to the time the academy started. So that was the plan that was put together. Obviously, the first three parts are part of the amendment that's before you. I'm happy to say Personnel Board recommended approval, and as I understand it, the OPOA approved it overwhelmingly, and I know Mr. Justin Smith is here as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, other proponents today?
Good afternoon, thank you. My name is Justin Smith, 13445 Kyra Avenue. Thank you for your time and giving me this opportunity to address the council today. I'm the treasurer of the Omaha Police Officers Association. I'm here on behalf of the men and women of the OPOA. Due to an Easter obligation with his family, our president, Patrick Dempsey, is unable to be present. Pat sincerely wishes he could be here and thanks each of you for your time and dedication to these issues that impact public safety. Since 2020, law enforcement has changed, and not just on the coasts or in cities that have experienced major issues. These changes are still impacting Omaha in 2025. Cities across the country have seen a decline in staffing. Whether this is due to the economy, political environment, social issues, or priorities of a new generation of workers, we must adapt in order to successfully recruit and retain qualified police officers. Currently, the Omaha Police Department is approximately 14% below our authorized strength, and we are struggling to find qualified people who want to make a career out of police work. Even more alarming is the fact that by the end of 2028, 42% of our current sworn staff will be eligible for retirement. We are in a staffing crisis, and this proposal before the council is a step toward digging out of this hole. The proposal recognizes that Omaha not only deals with the most violent situations, but it also sets a standard that Omaha is and will be the premier law enforcement agency in the state and should be a destination for anybody seeking a career in law enforcement. This proposal further establishes that our city is willing to invest in public safety and is committed to fixing the staffing crisis. Thanks to the strong partnership between the community and the Omaha Police Department, Omaha has experienced a decrease in violent crime. This is a source of pride for the men and women who choose to show up to work every day, put on their uniform, and pour their hearts and souls into their job. It is imperative that the Omaha Police Department has the resources to invest in quality people so we can hold up our end of this partnership. One important aspect of this proposal, as mentioned by Mr. Indembosh, is the enticement of veteran officers who might look to come to Omaha Police Department from a comparable agency, but they might be concerned about taking a pay cut. Under this proposal, experienced officers would receive full credit for their years of service of law enforcement experience and potentially come to Omaha at the top officer pay. I'll just include, I will just conclude by saying that I would like to thank Chief Schmodder and Mayor Stothart for recognizing that we are at a critical point in staffing and for their willingness to start the process of addressing this problem. I would also like to thank each of you, because you two have an important role in fixing this critical issue affecting public safety. And I'd be willing to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Yes, sir, Omaha City Council, Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Christian Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I have no problem with the officers getting more money. You can throw as much money as you possibly can at them. My problem is their training is obsolete, their equipment at the police station is obsolete. And if you can pay all the money in the world, Eric Snowden got plenty of money, he still ran Russia. He was talking about he was upset with the United States. So let's look at this thing realistically. I want them to have more training. The CIA is under trained, FBI is under trained, Trump fired all of them. And these young guys in Omaha, some of them even better out of state of Nebraska. So we're moving into a global economy, and the reason why you can tell why, or how you would know why they're doing this? The farmers, they're not upset over the tariff. They're upset of the...
Stay on topic here.
Yeah, I'm telling you what the problem is. The problem is...
You're getting off topic.
Okay. Well, there's going to be no more fossil fuel. That's what the farmers upset about, for their combine.
Any other opponents today?
Hello, my name is Kyle Ross, K Y L E, R O S S. My address is 2464 Harney Street, apartment number 22, Omaha, Nebraska. My understanding of this ordinance is that it's about the staffing, the staffing shortage in the police department. And I am going to give several examples that might seem off topic to Mr. Festerson of District 1. But if you give me a minute to finish my sentence, I'll make the connection between staffing issues in the Omaha Police Department and what I'm trying to give as an example. One reason that I'm opposed to this ordinance, 44254, is that I would rather like to see an improvement in the working conditions for police officers. I believe that their job is close to impossible. I lived for two years with a great view of city view. Police, the fire, the ambulance, whatever, somebody was there every day, and sometimes two of them. Their presence didn't get to the core of what was going on and what the problem was. So I'd like to see more improvement in their working conditions. I'd like to see crime calming areas, somewhat similar to traffic calming areas. That area where I lived had a lot of racism, density, gentrification, poverty, over policing. The police were there for things they couldn't do anything about. I mean, I'd like to see more people on the ground like myself. I'd like to work in alliance with you in that particular four-block area so the police can go to violent situations that they need to go to or think they need to go to. The two specific things that I would like to see as an improvement to that area and maybe saving money to where the police don't have to keep coming back there all the time is have, for example, the city buy at a fire sale prices, City View, and make it into, and I would lead that, and I know a bunch of people...
You do need to make sure you're stayed on topic, though, to the police contract.
Okay. I believe that that would lower your expenses if City View were a garden block. And also, there's, we're a public garden, public park. I believe it would lower... So again, improving their working conditions, putting crime calming areas where the new 70-unit apartment building is proposed, making that back to its ancient forest. I know it's hard to understand, but I think that they're connected, Mr. Festerson. That's all that I have to say, everyone. Thank you for giving me the time to talk.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony. Any other opponents today? Public hearing is closed.
I have a couple of follow-up questions. We'll see if others have lights today or not. So clearly, more needs to be done for our officer shortage, and I think that's why we have this topic today, and that's why it's being proposed, and I think that's something we do need to address. Whenever we have a contract, though, I do like to engage in the financial components of those contracts. And so, Mr. Curtis, if you're available, just for a couple of questions. Should this be approved next week? I believe it's accurate to say that expected or anticipated costs are $2.5 million in 2025, and then approximately $9 million in 2026. Is that be accurate?
Steve Curtis, City Finest, yes, that's correct.
And in 2025, we're confident we can handle that through attrition in the current police department, right? So no impact to this year's budget?
Correct.
And in 2026, I know you're just underway now in that preparation of that budget, but you'd be confident that that could be handled within that budget while still accommodating other priorities, such as many things, but also potential property tax rate reductions?
I don't know about the property tax reduction, but yeah, we can handle it in this budget.
In '26?
Correct.
Okay. And then my understanding is that the amounts they're going up in 2025 and 2026 is largely because of the Nebraska State Patrol in 2025, and then what we believe is a salary increase in La Vista in 2026. Is that true, too?
That's my understanding, but probably deferred HR.
Okay. Mr. Indabosh, if you don't mind coming down, and I'll think my second question's probably for you, anyway.
Bernard Indabosh, Deputy City Attorney. You are correct. In 2025, Nebraska State Patrol is the highest, and City of La Vista has a pay raise that's going to go into effect on October 1st of 2025. We anticipate that other agencies might, but because it's past our March 31st deadline, it won't have any effect on the calculation for next year.
Okay. So unlikely any additional raises would come into impact that number in 2026?
I'd say more than unlikely, it's certain, because the way the language is written, you take a snapshot at March 31st.
Okay, good. And then I had one just sort of a technical question for you. I noticed in Article 37, Section 1, it also amends the 8% in 2024. Of course, we've already done that, and 2024 has already passed. Is that an intentional inclusion in this document?
I'll have to look at the version to make sure. I mean, I think I made some corrections to some language that didn't get removed the last time, and that may have been one of them that wasn't, but I'll double-check to make sure.
I think worth checking before next week, because I think that is the case, but I don't see how that would apply here. Okay. All right. I think that's the last question I had. Other than that, I would just also comment that what's not in the wage proposal, but I think is also important, is the administrative things that Mr. Indabosh noted, which is accepting the applications year-round, keeping the lists eligible year-round, and doing more than one class a year. I've always felt doing multiple classes is important when we're trying to address the fluctuations that naturally happen with retirements and recruiting. So I think those are non-economic parts of this proposal that are real important, too, I just wanted to point out. I don't see any further lights. Next item?
Item 44, ordinance to create new Section 36-141 of the Omaha Municipal Code, making it illegal to street race and to amend Section 36-232, giving authorities the ability to tow a vehicle belonging to the driver in violation of Section 36-141.
The public hearing on number 44 is today. Proponents, please. We'll have a brief overview by the City Prosecutor's Office, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Kevin Slump. I'm the City Prosecutor, City Law Department. I was contacted several months ago by the Omaha Police Department regarding ongoing issues and problems relating to street racing, specifically, street takeovers, and a variety of bad driving behaviors that we looked at. Always having been problems enforcing under current city ordinances and state law, and looking for solutions to happen that could be utilized to improve these situations. What happens a lot of times in these scenarios is the people will advertise on social media, they will ask people to get involved in blocking off streets to the orderly flow of traffic for the purpose of engaging in racing or stunt driving, things that are very dangerous to the public in general, things that cause traffic to be backed up and not having access to the orderly flow of traffic by citizens, and then large crowds that wind up coming in response to these types of events. They happen in city streets that are blocked off, they happen in parking lots, and it's becoming an increasing problem, not just here, but in other cities and nationwide. So cities and states are coming up with ordinances and legislative solutions for this, and our proposal is to address this by targeting the bad driving behavior that involves specifically racing, stunt driving, burnouts, just any kind of bad driving where people gather. Also, those that aid and abet in this type of activity by posting promotions for it on social media, or being involved in blocking off the streets by barricades, or by using lots of vehicles that are illegally parked so that traffic can't get through, the large crowds that are associated with it. So this provision would target spectators as well, that would allow those individuals to be fined for being present at and participating in the crowds that are spectators. And then finally, looking at solutions to the vehicles that wind up being nuisances on the road that prevent traffic from getting through, and also blocking off streets. So individuals that are involved, whether they're participants, people that aid and abet in blocking off the streets, or people that are in the crowds, they would be subject to having their vehicles towed pursuant to this section, and impounded, and face the penalties provided in the ordinance. But I think it will generally provide law enforcement with additional tools that they don't currently have, and make it easier to police this type of activity, make sure it doesn't create further problems. And then hopefully, by allowing citations or arrests to all the individuals involved, and to removal of vehicles, to prevent it from what happens a lot of times now, is moving from one section to the city to another if law enforcement shows up. So that's essentially the reasons behind the ordinance, and I'm happy to take any questions that any of the council members have.
We talked this morning, too, about the interest of noise amongst neighborhoods in addressing that. I believe there is an amendment to the whole under consideration. You want to talk about that?
Amendment to the whole consideration. A couple of things. You mentioned the noise components. So we are looking to add to the definition of sideshow that's currently under A1, to include specific activities that would include creating or causing unnecessary engine noise. It should be able to deal with those issues, as well as a specific definition of drag race that was requested.
Okay. Thank you. Other proponents that want to speak?
My name's Jerry Johnson. My address is on file with the City Clerk's Office. I'm a proponent, of course. I support the police. My brother was a 24-year veteran, and he has a nice retirement now. And my comments today does not reflect on anything negative towards the police department, but what Millard, Board District, or anybody else. I got everything written down here. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss this issue. I call it the teenagers gone wild in Miller West parking lot. I live nearby. Gentleman was mentioning noise. There are times that they wake me up in the middle of the night. I'm going to stick to the script, though. This activity's been going on for five years, over five years. Five years ago, we had a homeowner association meeting was held, and Representative Don Rowe was at that meeting, as well as the Omaha Police Representative present. I have contact in the Miller School District, the mayor's hotline, the Omaha Police Department, Councilman Don Rowe, and the Douglas County Sheriff. Again, I'm not criticizing anyone. Some of the comments I received from the police department, the Omaha Police Department, we cannot have a police car 24/7 days a week in the parking lot. We have a lot of parking lots in Omaha. You're lucky you do not have police cars in your neighborhood. When I was at the mayor's town hall meeting recently, I addressed the mayor on the same subject, and her representative said that just a few calls in that parking lot. They tell me to call 911. I call them all the time. Here's some comments I received from the Millard administration. I'm not naming names. I'm not. From the Millard administration, we cannot do anything. The signs in the parking lot state that the lot is closed from 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. If they increase security, they'll have to lay off a teacher. The Millard School District did provide some security, and the Homeowner Association provided security for a while. That's a total waste of money. Those teenagers own that parking lot. Getting back to this, there's a lack of funding, oh, Millard, there's a lack of funding for school-wide use of cameras. I don't think cameras do anything, anything. It's just, these kids are on Facebook recording it, so. I witnessed many incidents of teenage reckless behavior in that parking lot. One time, I saw two teenage girls riding on top of a car while I was in motion. Large groups of teenagers gathering in the parking lot on weekend nights. I was up there Saturday night. I don't use the gun valve, because I don't think it's a good idea having me up there watching them. Not a good idea. I witnessed Saturday night, 20 cars in there, they're all organized. I called 911. They took off, and they must have scanners. Am I going to show you the video? Take too much time. Besides, I got a ton of them. Friday night, they made so much noise, it would qualify for that ordinance. And another thing, there's parking lot tire marks in the parking lot you can see. As far as I'm concerned, it has graffiti. I asked the Millard to clean it up. They say they can't clean up tire marks. I'll repeat myself here. I have heard roars of engines while tires are screeching around as they drive in circles. They're street racing in the parking lot. I've seen them. During it, one time I was walking during school day, during dismissal, a student was driving in circles at the south entrance of South 178th Street, going against traffic. Again, on this, it's not all Miller West students doing this. 95% of the Miller West students are fine people. I've come in contact many times. It's just the 5% we have to stop. I just want it to stop. I don't want the teenagers being in charge of that parking lot. And in closing, I believe this proposed ordinance will stop this kind of reckless behavior, only if teen drivers' parents take this seriously. And one last note, there was a fatality at South 176th Avenue last night. I drove down, I drove down, I drive down that intersection every day. Now, this isn't the street racing, but it involves speed. And we need more police present out there to write tickets and be a deterrent, because right now, we don't have a deterrent. I want to thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing your testimony. Other proponents?
Hello. Douglas County Sheriff Aaron Hanson, 3601 North 156th Street. I'll keep my comments brief. Very appreciative of the mayor, and City Attorney Cousy, City Prosecutor Slump, OPD Chief Schmodder, Captain Desler, Lieutenant Flynn, and you, the council, for pushing this topic. This is one of the number-one issues that our constituents care about when it comes to public safety. This is one of the top issues, because our constituents know that when their loved ones leave the house every day, they statistically have a higher probability of losing their life to a reckless negligent or careless driver than they do an armed criminal. And that is the statistics, and that is the facts, and losing your loved one in a driving fatality is just as painful as it is to a violent crime. Mr. Johnson brought up a great point. Last night, we lost a 16-year-old member of our community, good student, just going to watch a baseball game, to a distracted negligent driver. Lost her life. It's the second one from that school alone over the last few years. And that's why I'm so appreciative that you are taking action on this. I understand this is still a work in progress, but I can tell you that many of these young people, they do not understand the dangerous realities of their actions. They're acting as if they're in a video game. I've seen, we've seen fatalities in Lincoln for these type of street events. I've firsthand seen cases in which these street events have resulted in property damage collisions and near personal injury accidents for observers. And these are very dangerous crimes. We do appreciate your attention. Although I'm jealous that you can pass an ordinance like this, don't worry about pushing this activity out and done incorporated. Douglas County, our deputies will handle it out there. We're here to help with whatever enforcement you need to work with our partners in the Omaha Police Department to enforce this ordinance when it's passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Pat Vendetti, 1235 Park Wild Avenue, Omaha. And some people think that Park Wild Avenue is in Council Bluffs. It's down in the middle of Little Italy. And Austin, you were there not too long ago, taking some heated questions from some of those Italians that have a very short fuse. But I must say, Austin, you handled the situation very, very professionally, and you're a real asset to Public Works. Thank you. Now, can we get that street to two-way? Danny, I was a little upset then with your introduction. You identified several major educational institutions, but you neglected to mention good old Cathedral High School, Danny. Yeah, it's a sad day for Cornhusker Driving School. The young lady that was killed last night just graduated from our driving school, and the instructor who had this student was in tears and wondered, what can we do to improve the delivery to our students? It's tough to know what goes through their minds. I know recently, Mike McKnight from Channel 6 came out and left a video of what this ordinance is all about. ordinance is all about. And when you, when I showed this video, and when I show this video, because we do it with every class, some of those kids are looking at it laughing and smirking. And again, we're talking 14, 15, 16, and 17-year-old students. But we think it's extremely important that they leave that classroom with the right attitude. We think it's extremely important that they leave behind-the-wheel instruction with a positive attitude. And the reason why we feel the way we do is because we issue the driver's license. They don't have to go to the DMV. And every one of our instructors are very cognizant of that. And I, I want to make my, my comments very short in closing in that I would, I would appeal to council today, two things, and I just wondered if the council would be amenable to this. Number one, first offense, I would like to see the, the vehicle confiscated. Tow trucks would love to come. If you have five tow trucks lined up, they would love to pick those cars up and take them away. And then number two, I wondered if we couldn't add a, a drug impairment ordinance or something to that effect without, and I don't want to muddy the ordinance at all, but I think drug impairment is, is very important that we look at and see if, if it, if it would be relevant to the, to the ordinance. And I, I'll tell you what, you want to send a clear message, message to the motoring public towing that car and having them go down to the impound lot and spend another 200, 300, 400 bucks to get that car out of there? And the humiliation that comes along with that. I don't think, I don't think the ordinance, the penalties on the, with the ordinance are strict enough. And the fine, I, I believe if I read the, the fine correctly, was it $200, $300 first offense? You know, that's, that's peanuts today. And I would hope that at least, and I would like council to answer this question. Is it possible to add, uh, first offense, uh, towing that car? Vehicle confiscation, vehicle impoundment? Would that be against what we're trying to get accomplished?
You can ask that question.
And I, I, I'm referencing that to the city, to the city attorney's office. And then number two, if we could add drug impairment to that. And I would be happy to entertain any questions from members of the council, should you have any?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? We do have an opponent by Zoom too, that I won't forget. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Crystal Rhodes. I'm at 4565 Shirley Street, and I'm here in opposition to the proposed ordinance on street racing. I don't actually think that this ordinance will solve any problems. The core issue is not the law itself, but the shortage of over 100 police officers and ineffective traffic enforcement. What we need here is additional enforcement and to ensure that our police department is appropriately staffed, because creating more ordinances is completely ineffective without sufficient personnel to enforce them. Now, currently, individuals engaging in street racing can be charged with willful reckless driving, carrying penalties up to a $500 fine, three months in jail, a minimum 30-day license revocation for a first offense. If the street racing is indeed such a critical problem that it warrants specific penalties, I'm extremely confused about why an ordinance is being proposed that would lessen penalties compared to those already in place under existing law. It's illogical to propose penalties lower than those for existing willful reckless driving statutes if we do in fact agree that street racing is a menacing crime, and I do agree with that. Additionally, this ordinance could potentially criminalize individuals who are merely witnesses to street racing, such as bystanders standing at a bus stop, or anyone standing on the street who stops to stare when something interesting, dangerous, or unusual occurs. I don't know about you, but I've passed by a lot of car accidents in my life where there was an awful lot of rubbernecking going on. It's a natural response to something that's dangerous or not frequently seen for people to stop and stare at it. And I don't think that we necessarily want to turn all of those people into criminals and put them in danger of prosecution, because it raises serious questions about fairness and justice. Another troubling aspect of this ordinance is seeking to codify conduct, which the public defender for Douglas County has referred to in the newspaper as, and I quote here, blatantly unconstitutional, end quote. The county sheriff has already been doing what is proposed in this ordinance with regard to impounding vehicles and confiscating cell phones. And this raises a lot of concerns, because by attempting to codify such a practice, what's likely to result is a lot of lawsuits and legal challenges, which undoubtedly will mean incurring costs for the city. I think that the most appropriate action here for the council to take is to figure out how to get the police department fully staffed, so that they have an opportunity to exist the stronger, more forceful existing reckless driving laws. And I would urge you to prioritize that, because I believe that fully staffing that police department is going to be the most effective first step to curbing this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
My name is Janine Sterns. I'm at 15114 Atlas Plaza, and I want to wish all of you a good afternoon, city council members. I've been watching very closely as to what happens in Omaha throughout the years. In my 25 years in Omaha, I have seen traffic situations get worse and worse. Different traffic situations have led to new laws being made. This is fine to help with the technicalities, but I'm afraid that that's where it will stop. Other than technicalities, it is a waste of time, because there are laws in place for speeding, running red lights, and to protect citizens from road rage. Laws don't stop people from breaking them. I feel it might seem to be a challenge for some people to break them and try to get away with that, as in pride. It was reported on November 17th, 2024, that 41 people died to excessive speeding alone for that year in Omaha. Taking, and this is taken from cityofomaha.org. From news sources, Lieutenant Danny Flynn of Omaha Police Traffic Unit reported that 2024 was extremely busy. It was the deadliest year for traffic fatalities. The mayor proudly boasted that since she's been in office, which has been since 2013, 100-plus police personnel have been added since she came into office. I'm not so impressed on this. At 100 officers in 12 years, that's only eight officers hired every year. The West Precinct covers from I-680 westward, with a wider coverage area than the other ones. We are very lucky to find patrols in the west Omaha area and Elkhorn. Eight police personnel per year just does not cut it. It's been boasted that we are a population of 1 million and growing. People don't want to put their lives on the line for measly wages. Either pay them competitive wages or even a little bit more to grow the force. I say this because the mayor was able to secure $495 million for her streetcar, and that services only for the downtown area, not the rest of Omaha.
All right, I want to make sure you're, you're speaking to the reckless driving ordinance we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
I am, I am.
Okay.
Uh, now, with the license plate reader systems, they're also known as LPR systems. They can range from 1 million to 10 million or more, depending on the scale. And I'm just bringing up these numbers to compare where we're standing at with this. And they can be more depending on the scale, complexity, and then there's the upkeep of hardware and software. I do have a scenario for finances with me. If any of you are wanting to ask, I'd be happy to share that with you. When Ernie Chambers was part of the city council, he said publicly, "LPR systems violate privacy laws." And the city council at that time kind of went along with him. I want to break down some info about that theory real quickly here for you.
All right, so you have to address the reckless driving ordinance we're talking about, right? Are you, are you speaking to red light cameras?
Yes.
Okay, that's not.
And LPRs, because I feel that the LPRs, um, would help in catching the criminals. And I, if I'm allowed to, I would like to kind of explain a little bit.
Just a, just a brief point on that, because that's not what we're considering today. In fact, cannot be considered, but for a state law change.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um, real quick, in the state of New Jersey, I do want to share some information for you guys to consider for helping this situation, since it's very out of control. And we do have a shortage, shortage of police personnel in the city of Omaha. The state of New Jersey, through the Department of Law and Public Safety, Matthew J. Plattkin, Attorney General, got grants for 21 county law enforcement agencies for the ALPR systems, because they had a big problem with stolen cars. These grants achieved statewide ALPR coverage and decreased stolen cars by 16%.
All right, we need to stay on topic, though. I think you're getting off topic about the lights. This is the reckless driving ordinance, it doesn't talk about.
Okay.
Cameras at all.
All righty. Well, as a concerned citizen, I am, this is one of my concerns, and I want to help you guys to succeed in bringing the streetcar races and red light runners and everything. Not only, and I do apologize, but real quickly, if you do take this into consideration, which I hope you do, these systems can even help with Amber Alerts and trying to find children who are lost, and solving crimes as well, as well as capturing the information that law enforcement needs to stop these racers. Even if they're not blocked off, they're still racing. 144th Street, um, just south of F, not too far from where I live, someone was racing down 144th, heading northward. The street curbs a little bit, veers off a little bit. I don't know if they didn't know it or what, but they lost control about that area, and they slammed into a traffic light. And they were going way over 100 miles per hour, and it split the car down in half. Just imagine sitting there and not spotted that person and having that come to you, towards you. We need to catch these people while they're in the acts. And if you guys can please talk about these license plate readers, I think that would help solve the problem in these.
All right. Thank you.
I want to thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony. Any other opponents that want to speak today? Then we do have an opponent by Zoom too.
You know, when I seen that movie, when it flew over the cuckoo nest with Jack Nicholson, it screwed my head up. In the meantime, Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, you know, I listen to these folks speak. What's the difference between Indian Hill and cruising in our generation? They got rid of Speedway, the kids don't have no place to go. I look at this whole process, what they had to do to us. All these folks up in there have had a part of it in their generation of speed racing. So guess what? They made us take these classes, and we've seen these awful things on film. So we're gonna put these rookie policemen and rookie detectives back to work. They're gonna start writing citations, and the ones that don't show up to those classes, we're gonna send the detectives to go get them and stop eating, not doing their job. We'll, we'll go that, with that later. In the meantime, does it make any sense to tow people's car and fossil fuel is going out the door, you're gonna have all these abandoned cars, can't get rid of them? Let's make the police start doing what they supposed to do. They stopped cruising on DAS, didn't they? So let's go back to the same process. And when you see those films, whatever you do, if you see them bents and bunnies up there, do not take the class anymore.
Any other opponents in the audience today? Seeing none, we do have an opponent by Zoom. Joy will get you off mute here in a second. Okay, try that.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, good afternoon, council members. My name is Joy Cathurima, spelled J-O-Y-K-A-T-H-U-R-I-M-A. I live at 5660 South 96 Court, Apartment 1468127, Omaha, Nebraska. I work as Policy Counsel for the ACLU of Nebraska, and I'm testifying on behalf of the ACLU of Nebraska today. For nearly 60 years in Nebraska, the ACLU has worked in courts, legislatures, and communities to protect the constitutional and individual rights of all people. With a nationwide network of offices and millions of members and supporters, we take up the toughest civil liberties fights. Beyond one person party or side, we the people dare to create a more perfect union. We appreciate the intent to address racing and reckless driving that occurs in our city. We do want to express concern with the proposed racing ordinance and its potential impact on non-offenders, in particular, the proposed vehicle impoundment provision. The impoundment provision is a punitive criminal penalty, and the proposed ordinance allows for the imposition of that penalty prior to a conviction or even before a criminal case is filed. Criminal penalties are not and should not be imposed on people before they are convicted. A secondary concern we have is that the impoundment penalty is not necessarily imposed on alleged violators, but can include owners of those vehicles. So a person whose car is being used by another to commit a law violation without their knowledge shouldn't be punished. This ordinance, as proposed, could allow for a parent or a friend to lose use of their vehicle if another person is cited or arrested for a subsequent violation, and the cost to tow, impound, and store vehicles are significant, and those should not be borne by non-offenders. Lastly, we do have a concern about the level of discretion the Omaha Police Department will have in determining who is a spectator of a drag race, sideshow, or burnout. If these events are occurring near shopping centers or neighborhoods, and you know, someone previously mentioned, like, people can be lucky lose, so people who may be shopping or returning to their neighborhoods could be presumed to be spectators by simply being within 200 feet of what is deemed as the abat location. We do urge you to consider our commit, our comments, and we thank you all for your public service.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony. I think that concludes, opponents. We'll close the public hearing. We do have some lights on. Councilmember Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm wondering if I could call Captain Desler to the podium. I see him in the crowd.
Good afternoon, council.
Captain Mark Desler, Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street.
Thank, thank you, Mark, for sticking around today, being here. Do you head up the traffic unit for the?
I do, I do. I oversee the traffic unit.
Okay, can you talk about what that, what that entails?
Uh, traffic unit is divided, divided into two specific divisions. One division is the, the people that go out and do all the traffic control, large events like College World Series, uh, events like that, when they're not doing that, they're in the neighborhoods, fielding city council appointments for speeding violations, red style, you know, red light violations, stop sign violations. And then the other half of the unit is the crash investigation squad. We follow up on all the hit-and-run accidents that occur in the city, and then all the serious injury and fatality accidents that happen in the city.
Okay, I guess the real reason I called you up was, I mean, you're basically boots on the ground when it comes to traffic, you're, you and your team.
Yes, we are.
And can you speak to how you feel about this ordinance? And can you speak to how you feel about this ordinance, proposed ordinance?
I support the ordinance for several different reasons. Other people have spoken that, yes, there are laws on the books right now that we can enforce, but this encapsulates many of them together into one item that puts some teeth in what we can do. I know people oppose the tow for the vehicle, but the tow for the vehicle stops the actions immediately. If we choose to cite an individual for participating in the drag racing or the sideshow, if we cite him for reckless driving right now, we issue them a citation and they're free to go in the car. If it gives us the ability to tow that car right here and right now, it stops that activity immediately. It stops the activity for the remainder of that day or maybe the weekend. And I also think it sends a very strong message to other people that may want to participate in this type of activity that is a consequence of being involved in this type of thing.
Thank you, I think Mr. Vendetti spoke pretty well to that as well.
Yes, he did.
So I appreciate that. Thanks, Mark, for staying around this afternoon.
Certainly.
The one, I wanted to speak just a minute. I'm probably speaking out of turn here, but on the license plate readers. I've done some investigation on that. And the city council serves at the pleasure of the state legislature. And I believe it's, I don't know that we could pass an ordinance that would allow us to use license plate readers to issue citations. I think we have cameras, and we can use those for investigations and that kind of thing, but we couldn't send a ticket. Like over in Iowa, you can be cited for running a red light based on your vehicle being recorded by a camera. I don't think we have the ability to do that in the state of Nebraska at this point, right?
To my knowledge, we do not, in the state of Nebraska, have the ability to do that.
And Councilman Rowe, I can jump in. Mackousie Law Department, you are correct that the state would have to, say, give us permission to do that. Many, many decades ago, not this council, but a city council did try to do that. We were sued by Senator Chambers. We did lose rather quickly by the court, the district court finding that it was unconstitutional to do that, and we didn't have the authority to do that. The additional concern with having red light cameras or however you want to refer to them is you would basically, the legislature would have to decriminalize red light running, which means it doesn't carry a penalty. You don't lose any points up your license because it has to become a civil infraction. So you use council bluffs as an example. Those tickets that people receive in council bluffs are not criminal tickets. They're a civil citation, of which you get a fine because the ticket automatically goes to the registered owner of the vehicle, regardless of who is driving it. So if I was driving your car and I got one of those tickets, Councilman Rowe, you would get the citation, not me. And that is a constitutional issue in that it basically, if it remained a criminal offense, that would be basically removing the presumption of innocence for people to have because you wouldn't be entitled to a trial or anything. So the legislature, if they ever decided to move forward with that, would have to consider those two things. So having a red camera, light camera, has benefits. It also has drawbacks as well when it comes to the collateral consequences for traffic infractions.
Earlier today, I had a conversation with one of our staff assistants. And I asked her the question, is there anything in the state law? And she said, no, there isn't. But that Senator John Kavanaugh, in January, did introduce a bill, LB 616, that may speak to that. But in doing the research, it's not getting any traction. And I don't think we're going to see that bill passed in this term. I think there's a lot of, to Mr. Cousy's point, there's a lot of detail that would have to go into that. And I don't think that's been fully researched yet. So right now, our hands are pretty much tied when it comes to. So I think an ordinance like this is what we can do. And I'd probably be interested in hearing from Mr. Vendetti some more about, I mean, what would be an appropriate level of, you know, fine that would get somebody's attention? Because I tend to agree, maybe $250 or $100 for a spectator might not get somebody's attention like losing your vehicle for 10, 15 days. That's all I had, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. I get some questions, I guess, from Mr. Cousy to start, or Kevin. Sorry, Mackousie Law Department.
In no particular order. I will agree with previous testimony. We are short of law enforcement in the city, and that's what item number 43 was discussed to address the shortage of the men and women in the Omaha Police Department. Mr. Cousy, can a bystander at a bus stop that witnesses these events, are they, do they have the ability to prosecute somebody that's at a bus stop?
I think that, Mackousie Law Department, I think that example that was given was not very realistic, a little ridiculous, I guess, maybe designed to make a point. No, of course, someone at a bus stop wouldn't be able to be prosecuted for something like this. The police are professionals. They would conduct an investigation to determine people who are there, what their level of involvement. And if you are just a bystander at a bus station, the police aren't going to do anything to you. And even if something were to happen, we still have a system. This is a criminal offense. People are entitled to trials, to lawyers, and they're entitled to a trial should something like that happen. But I think that example was pretty unrealistic.
Okay, thank you. And in the research, in our briefing today, I think you said it's been several months that the city's looked into this. What other cities have we, either Midwest or around the country, we compared you to, for this ordinance before us today?
I'll have to defer to my colleague, Mr. Slump, on that.
Kevin Slump, Omaha City Prosecutor, City Law Department. I looked at a whole lot of different approaches from different cities and different states. But the kind of template that I used was a very similar ordinance in Kansas City.
Okay. And in the ordinance, we talk about motor vehicles. Can you confirm for me if it's a pack of, we see a lot of these young kids on motorcycles that are in packs. Are we able to apply this ordinance, if it is passed, to motorcycles?
I think the definition of motor vehicle would include those types of vehicles as well.
Okay. And the impoundment of the vehicle, is it correct that that can be done on offense number one, two, or three, or all at the discretion of the Omaha Police Officers?
Right. The impoundment is based on probable cause that the individual, that the vehicle involved is associated with an individual that's in violation of this ordinance and that as a nuisance on the streets, they can be towed and impounded.
Thank you. I think this might be from Mr. Cousy. We got two smart lawyers here, so one of you guys. Mr. Vendetti, who I got a tremendous amount of respect for, five decades of teaching safe driving. I see him all the time. I mean, for growing up in this district, I see those little cars forever. He had asked an important question, Mr. Cousy, about adding drug impairment to this ordinance. Is that a possibility to do?
Mackousie Law Department, that's not something that's necessary. People who operate a motor vehicle while impaired by a controlled substance would be treated as a DUI. So that is something that already exists, that already exists in the law, that driving under the influence of a controlled substance prescribed or illicit can constitute drunk driving or impaired driving.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And that was a good question. As a lawyer, I didn't necessarily know the answer to that either. So I hear, I think, I certainly won't speak for my colleagues, but I hear from a lot of my constituents. I would say the number one complaint I get is speeding, excessive speed, bad driving, going from Little Bohemia to the Old Market. I'll use the Old Market as an example. If those motorcycle packs or a couple of cars or a couple of motorcycles are doing those peel outs and they're only going 5 or 10 miles an hour in the Old Market, they're not on Dodge Street doing it where it's another problem. Is this applicable to people in the Old Market for noise and doing all those stunts that they do?
Certainly, it would involve stunts because a lot of times they wind up, you know, they're doing wheelies and everything, and that creates a danger to the public. So, yes, I would, that type of behavior would be specifically included. A lot of times, they're riding in conjunction to block off other traffic. So even if they're not driving fast, per se, the fact that they're engaging in stunts and blocking traffic would constitute a sideshow or the type of behavior that is included in the ordinance.
And this morning, when we had the amendments that we're talking about, so that unnecessary engine noise, that's kind of what we're talking about here. So you covered that. And it's a drag race, as you spell out to be clarification-wise, two or more vehicles at a point, side by side, accelerating rapidly in a competitive attempt to cause one vehicle to outdistance the other. So our city public defender, county public defender, who I got also tremendous respect for, is the constitutionality of this? I'm assuming our HUD department certainly vetted this, and there's courts that can decide things. But we feel, is this as written today, the constitutionality of it? Are we on good ground?
I believe so. I think everything written here is designed to be a very measured approach to dealing with specific situations and problems. And I, anything can be challenged. And individuals that wind up getting charged under this ordinance can raise any challenges that they want to. But I don't think that any of the provisions that we have provided here would present a constitutional problem for enforcement.
Thanks for clarifying that. And I appreciate the patience of my colleagues. I just had a couple more questions. That is the number one complaint that I get, is it's from Little Bohemia to the Old Market. Midtown Councilmember Fesserson and I hear from people that live in both sides of Exarban Elmwood, Fair Acres. It's not unique to those small areas. It's everywhere. It's in Mort Meadows where I live. So I think this, in listening to the testimony, and I had a letter submitted this morning from the Midtown Neighborhood Association. It's made up of 17 neighborhoods in Midtown that I represent. And they signed on, as I said, I hear this from all around my district. They signed on in support of this, as have others. Mort Meadows, they're meeting tonight where I live. But they signed on with the Midtown Neighborhood Association to support this. So I appreciate my colleagues' patience. That's all the questions I have for now. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Melton.
Thank you. You can stay up. Actually, Captain Dressler, maybe if you could come back up? Because I wanted to note, you and I started exchanging emails about this, and I looked it up, December 8th of 2023.
Yes, Captain Mark.
And there's so many between now and then. And working with Douglas County Sheriff, because a lot of the problem out in my district is we have the SIDs. People are speeding inside the city limits, going into the outside the city limits. And so partnering with the Nebraska State Patrol, Douglas County Sheriff, and Omaha Police Department. But the problem we were running into, you had the cooperation of the departments. And in fact, I know one of your emails even said, "We have the helicopter working on it with us for some of them." You know, but the problem was, they're just, the only thing you could charge them with was these smaller infractions. It was, we don't really have a law in place right now. And I know somebody mentioned the reckless driving, who's not an attorney. And I just wanted to mention, the problem is, what we think, we think that that should be reckless driving because it seems like common sense would tell us it's reckless driving or willful reckless driving. But actually, the statute does it. It's the language in the statute that we can't use for this behavior. And in fact, in order to get to willful reckless driving, you have to have the underlying offense of reckless driving. And Supreme Court cases have said that speed alone cannot constitute reckless driving. So I would agree that I think our statutes need to be changed, especially the reckless driving. But we're not going to get there, at least this year, in 2025. And so I really appreciate, Captain, you working on this, which I think you even said it was in March of, March of 2023, or March of 2024, I'm working with Mr. Slump on what we can do to try and help these situations and get some laws in place. So, Mr. Slump, I really want to say, I want to thank you for all the research you did on this because we've been struggling with it. But how do you draft the ordinance and make it applicable and make it so that it can't be overturned? Because I understand the problem. You want to pass it and you want it to be upheld. And I just want to say, the impoundment, I think, is the important part of this. We impound vehicles all the time. We tow them just for being in a no parking zone. Your vehicle can be impounded. It can be impounded if you're getting a DUI. There's all kinds of reasons that your vehicle can be impounded. And I think this is an excellent ordinance to have impoundment as an option for the police department. Now, I also like to give our officers the discretion, too, though. I don't like to make things mandatory because there may be certain situations where Omaha Police may say, okay, there's a couple vehicles that may or may not be involved. Maybe they should get cited. We're not going to impound all 20. I have faith in our officers that they're going to know when it really is, was serious enough to impound it or when we think it's a real danger. And so I like to give our police department the discretion. And that's what this does. It doesn't mandate the impoundment. It gives our officers the discretion. And in our emails, I mean, we have a list where, at least I've gotten to know certain individuals out of my district. I think so have you.
Yes.
And in fact, one of my constituents, I mean, proudly, was saying, "I can't wait to go down to Ms. Johnson's district." And he was proud to go cause problems in her district. So I want this enforced. We have people that are doing this all over our city, and it's affecting all of our districts.
Yes.
And it's affecting people that live outside the city limits, where we care about everyone in our community and in our SIDs. And I want to say, it's been one of my top complaints over the last year and a half. And we don't have any other statutes with which we could charge people. So I just want to say, I don't think that the street racing problem will be changed or solved with an increase in police officers because we have had so many officers and law enforcement trying to combat this over the last year, that the shortage has absolutely nothing to do with this. But our previous agenda item that if passed next week as well, I think will really help with the shortage. That has nothing to do with these street racers. I mean, do you have any comments in regards to anything I said about that?
No comments, except support. I agree with you on this. This is a great tool for us to use. It's not magic. It's not going to change things overnight. But I think if it's passed where we do have the ability to impound vehicles and that message is going to get out there very quickly, that if we can apply this ordinance to specific people at specific times, words are going to get around rather quickly, that it's not a good idea to do these types of things anymore.
Especially the repeat offenders that you know. You know their cars, their license plates, their names, and actually, sometimes their parents at this point.
Yes, we do. And it's, again, I think it'll go a long way to help the situation. It's going to make things safer for the people doing the stuff. I mean, they're putting themselves in danger, whether they realize it or not. But it's going to help the other motoring public in the city. So I'm a strong proponent of this. And I think it will help us, help us try to solve this problem.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Captain, for all your work. And thank you for all the follow-up emails, too, and always getting back to me. So I appreciate that over the last year and a half or so. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
I have nothing. Mr. Slump, I just want to thank you for putting the work into it and recognizing the fact that we just don't have laws on the books that you can enforce, drafting something that we could and make it better. And I also trust you'll know the difference if somebody gets cited for, as a spectator, that your office and your prosecutors have always been extremely reasonable and will look at the facts and the evidence and dismiss any charges appropriately if they were not spectators.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm supportive of what we're trying to accomplish here today, too. And I agree, it is a major issue throughout the city. And I get the complaints all the time, as Councilmember Bagley also observed. And I'm interested in how it can address the events.
And I'm interested in how it can address the events, like we heard today, the one I think happened at Millard West. In my neighborhoods, though, it's mostly the racing up and down the thoroughfares, and Dodge Street in particular. I had an email from a constituent just last night. Another 10 motorcycles in the evening, racing down, almost caused an accident. I can hear them from my house every night, so I know it is a problem. And it's not just Dodge Street. It's lots of other places, too. So I am interested in that amendment of the whole that I know we're working on for next week that can also address the noise component of this. And one might say, well, we already have an ordinance on the books about noise and decibel measuring, and that's true. But it's very difficult to enforce. This would be a much more likely source of enforcement in that respect. Would you agree with that?
I agree with that, yeah. The noise ordinance we have right now is very hard to enforce. It deals with meters and distance and lots of other factors that make it very quick, make it very hard to assess that quickly and be able to write somebody for that.
And then one finer point on the observation that was made by an opponent about this would establish smaller penalties. The bigger penalty, of course, is the impounding or the towing. But are the amounts, talk about the amounts compared to what is currently in place right now.
It's been a while since I've done the fine waiver, so...
So I think the fines are certainly much more significant than you would usually get for a speeding offense or a careless or negligent driving offense. So those fines are up to 250 for the first time. But it also has a penalty of possible jail time. And so jail can be a possibility, like anything. It's going to depend on the facts of the particular case and the specific defendant that we're dealing with, and what kind of general record that they have. But those penalties exist. Additionally, there are additional penalties, obviously, for reckless driving and willful reckless driving. And a lot of times, their evidence under this will also constitute reckless driving, or willful reckless driving, or careless driving. Those are additional charges that can be filed in pursuit and convicted. This is just more specific. It allows us to deal with situations that may not necessarily constitute those offenses. But if they do, we can charge those offenses as well.
Okay. That's the distinction that Councilmember Melton was making, correct? Yeah. All right. I think those are the end of my questions for now, too. I don't see any further lights. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Non-action items, items 45 through 55, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
There's our motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Hug. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 4:32.
Thank you.